It's 5 o'clock, time to call the meeting orders. We want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, for those that were here earlier in stage. We'll start tonight with our prayer requests as we normally do. Tonight we have Ms. Scotty Yaman, we need to continue to remember him, Ms. Gabe. For Ms. Neva Taylor, continue to remember her. For Terry Harville's wife, battling cancer. For Josh Dillard, we need to continue to remember him as he's preparing for a transplant in the next few weeks. Need to remember Ms. Suzie Woodard's mother, Ms. Ethel Malone, she's in rehab, recovering from a broken leg. And Ms. Diane Smith, that's Shane Campbell's aunt, broke her ankle yesterday at TRW. And to remember Ms. Becky Cookston's sister, she's in the hospital, she was on the agenda tonight as discussion, but she's called and said she needed to go check on her sister. So, we need to remember those. Are there any others we need to remember?
Those are Terry Harville's brothers. He is a brother, he's in bad health. Very badly.
Okay. Terry Harville's brother.
Brian, we were just discussing Jill Huddleston, her mom, she's a teacher at Forks River, her mother is very, very sick.
Okay. Jill Huddleston's mother and Terry Harville's brother. Any others? If there are no others, we will go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you for another day and another day's worth of blessings, Father, that you grained us with. We're all blessed with health, I'd better be here tonight, and blessed with the great school system, and we just always want to be prayerful for it, and pray, Father, that you continue to bless us with good health. Father, we know there are those that we mentioned on these prayer requests, Father, that don't have the health we have, and we want to pray for them. For Scotty Yaman and Ms. Gabe, for Neva Taylor, Terry Harville's wife, for Josh Dillard, Ms. Suzie Woodard's mother, Ethel Malone, Ms. Diane Smith, Ms. Cookston's sister, Mr. Terry Harville's brother, and Ms. Jill Huddleston's mother, and any others, Father, we know of that we didn't mention, we just want to be prayerful for them, and pray that you give them the things they need that only you can. Father, we just want to pray that every day we live our lives, Father, the way that you'd have us to live, and, Father, that we do everything tonight in this meeting that best suits the school system. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
A pledge to lead this to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up tonight, we have an update on the Tennessee radio online assessment from Ms. Melinda Spivey. She's going to give us this update.
All right. I sent an email, or I called you all on an email, that you may or may not have read, but Ms. Smith asked me to give you the quick version. As the testing coordinator for our county, we get lots of communication that the director gets about testing, and so, we, I have copied, I have all kinds of information. We're meeting with schools tomorrow to actually get our game plan together. But, just some highlights over the last couple of years. The Smith County Board of Education has spent thousands of dollars in the past three years committed to having our students and teachers ready, and schools for online testing. In all schools, plus the alternative school, we have upgraded equipment, added labs, and upgraded our infrastructure. Students and teachers have spent almost two, four years in the labs, practicing on the MICA testing platform, attending trainings, and creating lesson plans around the online piece that would continue to prepare their students for the test. And when I say that, we have teachers who have taken their students in the labs weekly, like every Monday and Thursday, for 30 minutes or an hour, or whatever, to practice for this test. We have participated in the Tennessee Department of Education Breakness Day, which was a day designed to actually break the system, which it did, and we're told after that that it had been, the problem had been fixed. We also scheduled a data day training for our schools back in October, which we invited Dr. Nikia Townes from the Tennessee Department of Education, who came to even better prepare us for online testing, and we talked about online testing that day that she came. Our technology department has completed readiness surveys throughout the last three years, provided by the Department of Education, where at that time, we confirmed that Smith County was well above the minimum requirements to have a successful testing environment. And let me say this too, we were, as stressful as it was for us, we were in much, much better shape than some districts were, that were in the same situation we were in. Since testing moved to online, schools were given the liberty to create their own schedules with what worked best from that building. So, what had happened, each principal had sat down with their testing team to determine, we are going to test third grade English on this day, or fourth grade math on this day, and it kind of worked with their schedules. And honestly, as big of a headache as it was for the principal, or literacy leader, whoever created that schedule, it almost was better, because it gave them the liberty to, I know with the two high schools, they were going to test those students in the block of time that they had those students, so the whole school didn't have to shut down. So, that was, I guess, an advantage to testing. On Monday, February 8th, online testing made its debut in Tennessee. We had seven out of nine schools that were testing that morning, and we had students in labs ready to test by 8:00 a.m., with the exception of Gordonsville High School and Gordonsville Elementary, who had decided to let the first day of testing pass before they started their testing. By 8:30 a.m., the entire state of Tennessee had crashed the system, from what we could tell. Throughout the day, our people remained calm, they kept excellent attitudes, and were resilient. And I can't tell you, by 8:45, I was on the phone with every school, and every, there was nobody having a panic attack, the kids were calm, the teachers were calm, the principals were calm. It was, I couldn't have asked for a better situation for our county in the way that they handled. Here's what we practiced for, and it's crashed. I can't say enough about how good that they handled what had happened. One student, this is just one story of many that I heard, but one student at one of the high schools sat, she tested for about 30 minutes, then her computer crashed. The other students remained online and continued to test. So, that student waited 45 minutes for her test to reboot, while the others continued to test. Then hers rebooted, and so then the remainder of the students who had already finished their 90 minutes had to wait before they could submit for her to finish her testing time, so they could all submit together. So, all those students basically sat a good portion of the morning trying to test. And that happened at several schools, it wasn't just them. They didn't complain, they didn't whine, it was wonderful. I can't say enough good things about how the schools handled it. Finally, by the end of the day, most of our students who were scheduled to test on that day successfully finished what they were supposed to finish for that day. Around 4:30 afternoon on Monday, while we were also battling snow, and all that stuff, the Commissioner of Education sent memos to each director of schools to discontinue online testing. From this point forward, we will do all testing with paper pencil, with the direction from Tennessee Department of Education. So, at this point, we don't even have an option to test online. The State Department has said, the remainder of the state will test, paper pencil. So, we actually ordered our pencils today. Mr. Smith has asked principals to send a note home from the Commissioner, and Mr. Eddy is also doing a story in the newspaper. The Commissioner of Education provided a letter written from her, based on what happened and why they decided to discontinue online testing. The Tennessee Department of Education gave each director of schools the option earlier in the year to determine whether or not the student's score would count as part of their grade. So, we already know right now that we can say, this is not fair for these kids, or the scoring may be skewed because of the environment or the situation. So, Mr. Smith can, and I think he's going to let principals help make that decision about whether or not the grades will count for the students. We've also been told that scores, we will not have scores by the time report cards come, most likely, which now, I'm certain that's the case, because part of these tests have to be hand scored. We are asking tonight that you support our teachers as well. There is a letter in your packet, asking your support in approving the Tennessee Letter Ready, Letter and Resolution, asking that these scores for this year not count against our teachers, as they have worked extremely hard. Test scores are now tied to tenure, they're tied to differentiated pay bonuses, they're tied to evaluations, renewal points, lots of, every time you turn around, test score is tied to something that that teacher does. And we do not believe that the test scores will be valid, since some students were able to test a portion or all of their assessment, but others were not, and now, other students will test in a different setting. As well as the stress involved in the sudden change of plan. And I say that, and yes, we have been testing on paper and pencil for years, and it should be second nature, but it is also stressful. When you change on a student in the middle of what you're doing, you know, I used the analogy the other day, it's almost like what we're doing to teachers and students right now, is we're saying, we're going to practice football all year long, but then we're going to play basketball on game day. And that's what I feel like, I feel like that's the situation we've put our teachers and our students in. We hate that it's happened, we understand it may not have been in anyone's control at the Tennessee Department of Education, however, we also felt the responsibility of failure should not be given to our teachers, who've worked all year. So, we're asking you to support that resolution, that they not count toward their scores. We, you know, and another thing is, the bottom line, we can say all day long, well, even if they're counted, we're not supporting teachers and whatever, but those teachers take those scores, I mean, we have them out here in the room, they take them serious, and it's a big deal to them, and so, I feel like the best thing to do is support them like we will our students. And I'm also very concerned about our district accountability, and I know every system in the state is concerned as well, but Gina and I have talked at length about what we're afraid will happen to our district accountability, you know, but generally, we usually have pretty good report cards, and I'm a little bit, you know, I'm worried about our teachers, and I'm worried about our students, but I'm also worried about our district scores as well, and who knows what they'll do with that. But, do you, does it matter any questions? Is there anything about the testing that you want to know? That, I'm meeting with principals tomorrow, and literacy leaders, and we're going to drill down. Now, we will go to a more structured, everybody in three through eight will test math on day one, and everybody in three through eight will test, and they'll have to do both subtests on that day. So, you know, if we test, if we start testing on a Monday, and Monday is math, or Tuesday is ELA, subtest one and subtest two, both will have to be completed on that day. So, it'll be a full, it'll be like the old way of testing, where the school shuts down, and everybody tests, and so, we're going to meet tomorrow. They've given us a window of time to get testing completed, and so, we're going to meet tomorrow and say to schools, okay, now that we no longer have the ability to schedule as a school, what is best for you all at the district level? Because we'll create one district schedule, and everybody will shut down and test.
I do think our students and our teachers are very disappointed, because I think they, we felt like we were going to do well on it, and I know, we know from talking to the systems, where we were at compared to systems real close to us. We were way ahead of the game, a lot of that goes for Mr. Wilson.
We were way over ahead, I mean...
Technology was way ahead of many around us, we knew that.
Does either have any questions, or comments, or?
No questions? Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Okay, we will move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
Make a motion with consent items.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Enick, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our superintendent actions. Pretty small list this month, hope everybody had a chance to look at that. Now, we will move on to new business A. This is to amend policy 5.305, family and medical leave, this is the second reading. We have a motion on new business A.
Motion to approve new business A.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Gatton-Bynum, any discussion? And I am assuming that this will have to go one more reading?
It does.
Okay. If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. To new business B. This is to amend policy 1.6, using 1.600, this is the policy development and adoption to where we change three readings to two readings. Is there a motion on new business B?
Make a motion on new business B.
You're losing one point.
You're losing one point.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
We did that on the first reading, we didn't have a second reading.
He did it on the one point six hundred.
So, it's okay? Just one extra.
Now, we'll move to new business C. This is amend policy 6.201, compulsory attendance ages. Is there a motion on new business C? Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Enick, any discussion?
I'll be doing that statement, that no child shall be eligible to enter first grade without having attended an approved kindergarten program.
And this is just the first reading, so, we'd have to go one more reading.
One more reading.
Or one more, yeah, one more after this. Any more discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business D, it's a bid approval for diesel fuel. Do we have a motion on new business D?
Make a motion on new business D.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Next is new business E. This is the temporary options for students at Forks River School due to the County Fork Bridge closing. Do we have a motion on new business E?
Make a motion on new business E.
Ms. Gatton-Bynum, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Enick, okay, discussion. We may have to change that motion to, because we've got other suggestions up here. This probably needs to be a little more specific.
More specific.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody have any discussion? I mean, we have options here of a temporary transfer, options of a morning bus route from the farmer's market to Forks River School, but with a minimum of 15 students. We're, have the option of extended childcare, and any other options, suggestions?
Well, we're, let me, can I say this? The extended childcare, we're actually kind of doing that, because we've opened the doors ten minutes, right now, it's on volunteer basis, and so, that's helped some. One thing that we talked about, which is a temporary transfer, we originally, and Ms. Scotchkoff has put together some numbers today for me, I've got it right here, I'm going to hand out. One thing, we can't, it wasn't anybody's fault, I mean, not anybody sitting here, I know, I see Mayor Niz, and I'm sure you've dumped a lot of rocks over this, but, and we've got a meeting with T-Dot Thursday night, and I thought of a town hall meeting at Forks River, it's in Dupont, just as a notification, but I've asked him if he would, I'm leading in something, if it would be proper, and he felt like it would, to recognize me, and I'm going to tell him what it's actually costing us. And I've got this curious, here's a handout that Ms. Scotchkoff put the numbers together, let me just pass it over to you, man. And shocking, I think it's about $4,000 a month, approximately, what it's going to cost us. It's already costing us about $3,000, $3,500, $3,800, and that's not counting if we add another bus route. Originally, we didn't think, Ms. Scotchkoff and I didn't think, number one, she's low on drivers and buses, that we could run a route, but we got to study, and we got one driver, he gets back in time, he would put us across, and we, what, we figured five to 10 minutes late?
He could probably just have left us right after, in class, they wouldn't have time for us.
And, but actually, I was sitting there, my EDH needs kicking in, I was supposed to be watching that film a while ago, but I figured out that about 10 cars minimum, that we would take off by running the bus, and that, you take 10 cars off of that, you know, off that road, and that's quite a bit of traffic they'll have. And we figured, Diane, I figured going that way, we're not going to have any resistance to traffic coming back. And Mayor, I don't know if you were the one, or somebody, but we missed it different times, but we have saw an officer out there now, much more at the interstate, and the days that officer was there, the sheriffs, whoever, we need to thank for that, I don't know, but...
Who's your goal?
Well, who, who ever done that? When they do that, well, that's wonderful, it works. And you didn't see that, it's much more consistent the days they're there, you know, just where they're boarding the light, and actually going by the flow of the traffic. And I'll stop by there telling them, because I appreciate it, it would make a world of difference. But, I think this is doable, I don't think we need to do it for six or eight, you know, I don't think we can justify it, but with Diane's help now, and a driver to swill to do that, I think we could run a morning route if we need to. I do think that somebody should help us, I think T-Dot should help us, I don't know if they will, but we're going to ask it Thursday night. I think we, it's not our fault, it's like it's not anybody's fault in here, that the bridge wasn't designed properly, I mean, but we're going to ask them to do something to help us back, and, you know, one thing about the staff I've got, we agree to disagree, and I got Ms. Spivey pretty hot in there the other morning, and I was going to call you out, she's mad as a hornet, and I said, will you drive by for the schools, it's your choice? And, but you know, when I thought about it, it's not fair for their finished product, you know, that's, and you got to save the great crater that they've vested, the teachers and the students, and that's where they've chose to be at, that's not fair to ask them to, it's not, it's not the right thing. So, I didn't want to let my stimulus from my temper, I got to go around for a minute to calm down, and thought about it, and I thought, you know, that's the right thing if we've got the right numbers.
And I was still working, because I worked for Dr. Sorensen.
It was?
And I was studying her network. I ran for you.
But, you know, I thought, seriously, it's, you know, you know, as a, as a, as the teachers, they take a lot of private students, and they're not going to want to say four or five of any of their students that they've molded go through, you know, several years, and all of a sudden, they're not going to get credit for them on test scores, they're not going to get credit for them on a basketball thing.
They may be learning different things at both schools too.
Yeah.
If they was transferring.
They might not be the same place, but if we got the right numbers, and we think we can do it, I think it's the right thing to do. So, yeah, with your permission, if we set a number, and we maintain that, I don't want 30 to sign up, and then all of a sudden, we got five, three days into it, but I think it's, I think it's something good.
I've been contacted about that thing, the very thing, in support of it, and I mean, I think, well, I mean, these Facebook posts pretty well...
As you say, the Facebook posts in the back.
Tell the story, but, you know, I think it's a reasonable solution, and, you know, the person that contacted me also pointed out that it will help out down in Gordonsville, you know, with their traffic issues, because you're taking that number of vehicles off the road. And that's a good point.
I didn't even think of that till I got to reading what somebody said, and I kind of figured it, sitting back there, like, you know, you divided most, a lot of them single, you know, students, but you're taking 10 or 12 cars off of the road, that's going to, got to help, you know?
It's not going to hurt, and I do think that we need to support, I mean, like you said, it's nobody's fault, and I mean, we may be, the cost may be back on us, but at the same time, our students are our priority, and we'll work the numbers out. I mean, that's just my feeling.
Well, I got to think, you know, you just take the chance of an accident with 12 more cars, versus the big yellow school bus, the lights blinking, that's written or designed that way, and, you know, I'd feel bad if we didn't try at this point, so.
Enick, Ms. Pope.
I just wanted to add that we, at this point, we have 27 students that have committed to riding the bus if it was off.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. 27 students.
I've got a question actually for Mayor Niz, but does the state, I know you brought my name out, does the state have any kind of option to limit the traffic flow on that, put red lights up, or?
I'll answer your question, I've already been asked that several times. You know, I've talked to the Commissioner, Schroer, and also to Paul Diggs, which is Assistant Commissioner, Chief Engineer, they both are saying no, because of structural issues. That's going to be another question that will be asked probably more than 10 times Thursday night, so, we'll see what they say then, but so far, they have told me, no, on the one lane traffic. It makes sense to me, if you put a red light on there, it should have handled one lane traffic, but none of us here are engineers, and I sure wouldn't want to be responsible if it is, if those peers are in that kind of structural issues, then I wouldn't want to take the chance on that, I don't think T-Dot wants to either. And Ms. Beller is correct, of course, City of Gordonsville did provide that officer there, I've had that comment from several people, said that really related to traffic, so, we'll see what they say Thursday night, and, you know, I would, if I were y'all, I mean, asking, I told you to ask for that money, I don't know what the answer is going to be. I mean, we're going to have additional traffic on county roads, which is going to, which normally wouldn't be there, so it's going to tear up roads. I know that probably the roads in Portent is probably going to be asking the same question, and, you know, supposedly, there's additional funds to state right now, that they're pointing towards, some of it towards education, you know, there's a field there for highway departments to get some of that money. I would steer in that direction, you know, if you've got extra funds, you know, see if you could help us send it this way, you know, all they say is no.
I, just a quick, quick question to you, now, I've heard 90 days.
Yeah, the last article, I think, was in the paper, and of course, press release, they're looking in July, so that's way past 90 days. I don't say way, but in July.
My concern going into this is the fact that, attendance wise, going into the enrollment for Forks River School for the next year, if we don't, if we're teetering on our numbers for our classroom sizes, or if enrollment then increases at other schools, we're also looking at having to hire in possibly other teachers at other schools to accommodate the students that wouldn't want to either, I mean, if we can't say that there's going to be a bus that's going to be taken, and this is how it's going to meet, I mean, this is, I know it's a, it's a good suggestion to fill out our year, but what happens if we're looking at this going into the following school year?
Well, it's definitely, you know, we've got, we're sitting at several schools, that one student, at 25, we're going to split.
Right.
And Becky's back there waiting, you're, you're hoping for it, but, but, you've got several, so you don't know, and like I told you, that, those students might end up in humanism, but when they do, that, that's a split teacher, that, you don't know where, they might end up going, going to elementary, they could end up in union heights. You could look at even as low as 20 something students, or could move even six, and we might have to hire four teachers.
Right.
That's, that's what I said, I think the inefficiency, I think, I know the mayor's letting me say it's budget finance, you know, we got to pay for the service if we want these small schools, and it's, the only way you can be less efficient is having a weapon, because every time you hit 25, we're going to split, and, you know, you can't be efficient, and, you know, if you're sitting, we're sitting on some classes lucky enough to have 12 and 13 in them, and that's what would probably happen at Forks River, you'd have some classes, wouldn't you, just go with 12 and 13 students?
Yeah, just from what we were looking at, we would have probably two, if not three.
And that, that would be financially inefficient, be great for the student and the teacher, you know?
Right.
But, we would probably cost us much more money looking at long term, what could happen, depending on where they went.
Well, and if you're looking at four teachers, I mean, that's, gets into some big dollars.
Right.
A lot more in a bus.
A lot more in a bus, yeah.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
You wouldn't know that settling in, you know, that could, could not cost us any, but more likely would. Like I said, if one went, that took for class back there, that just one student, that's a whole teacher. that's a whole teacher.
Well, I think whatever we can do to stabilize enrollment and avoid those type issues.
Well, I do think it's a one, it's, it's, it's an act of God, basically, it's not anybody's fault, there's nothing anybody can foresee it happening. We just gotta deal with what we think. I think what's best for the school system and the students at this point. Becky, don't you be recruiting now. But you get, but you get the class role back.
Is there any more discussion? Do the motion that's on the table, was it for discussion? Yeah.
Discussion, oh, thank you.
Okay, so we will need, do we have a motion for new business E?
I make a motion that we approve a morning bus route from the farmer's market to Forks River Elementary.
Do we have a second?
And I'm gonna second it.
Ms. Gatton-Bine, Ms. Moore, Ms. Gatton-Bine, any more discussion on?
Don't we need to, do we not need to add a minimum or not?
We would.
Yeah, probably need to.
The 15, is that what y'all decided?
Well, I mean, just like it's written in the, a minimum of 15 kids. A minimum of 15 kids.
Are we gonna say, I mean, miss a day or two, it'll be, it'll be, it's for a whole week.
A couple weeks average and.
Yeah.
Right.
And let me add this too, we've had some very qualified volunteers, Ms. Linda Brem, I think most of y'all know Ms. Linda, she's volunteered three days a week out of, it is her part to, to sit with her parents. I think Melinda's offered on other days, I noticed, I think Bonnie, the grant staff had offered, was it Bonnie I read here? You had some, some certified teachers that had offered to sit down there where parents could leave them and go on to work and I think that was awful nice of, and, you know, people at that level offer to do that for the students.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to allow a morning bus route from Fort, from the farmer's market to Forks River School with a minimum of 15 students. Is there any more discussion? If not, this does involve money, so we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
We do need to work out, I guess, the logistics of how that'll be communicated to the parents and will you take care of that, Mr. Smith?
I will, but Ms. Pope, but I also started to change right now, communication with parents, she's got an ongoing Facebook messaging with them, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and I've sent a letter to every student at our school too.
So we've got a good dialogue going on right now and then?
We want to start it immediately.
Well, it'd probably take, how quick could, by the end of the week maybe getting started?
The driver just will have to rent for somebody to go open his establishment, which my student will be his father, so I would say within.
It'd probably take us, you know, two, three days to really get organized and.
So say Monday, say Monday.
Yeah.
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, if that barricade ain't, hopefully we'll go quicker than that, go by Monday.
And the time, as far as somebody down there to pick up, that somebody's gonna be sitting down there, parents are dropping off, they need to.
Well, we get, Melinda and Les and I'll get together and we'll get organized on.
He got a pilot at the middle school at 7:25, so if the parents are sitting there at 7:25 when he pulls up, he's gonna have to pick them up and be out of that parking lot by 7:30 to be all the way around to get to the school for 8 o'clock.
That'd need to be on the letter.
He's gonna be quiet, maybe.
We can't wait, huh?
We're not, he won't be out for waiting.
Mayor Ness?
Mr. Ambrose, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
If I'm understanding this right, it's saying that they would meet at the farmer's market, that's where the pickup would be, in there to park?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just for something to consider, that, that won't matter right now, but if it does go as long as you're talking, when the farmer's market opens, it opens early, like five or six o'clock in the morning and there's a lot of traffic there during that time?
We could probably meet in the shop off.
What I was gonna say is suggest, what about the Crump Parish parking lot, would that be?
The only reason that we suggested the farmer's market was if we had any type of, you know, precipitation that we would be dealing with, that we wouldn't have wet kids because you can't put so many kids in one person's vehicle. That's the only reason.
But I'm just giving you a heads up.
Right.
Once they, once they start in there, which I'm not sure, I think they start there and maybe it's not till the end of May, when will school be?
Well, of course, that's the schedule out, Mayor Ness, but we'll.
I'll get with Mr. Ron, he was saying, ask him and I can give you that information, that way you can.
And hopefully, but then that weather.
Oh, sure, sure.
We'll, we'll come up with a.
We want to be accommodating, I'm just throwing that out there and I'll get with him, get that schedule, if that's our, y'all, I'll get it back to Mr. Smith. And if it's gonna be after school year, it's really irrelevant, so I just thought about that, but I'll get with him.
Could we, just throwing this out there, it'd be a little other way, but if we had to, we could meet back at the livestock, so that you get under that.
Where the little fare, fare booth is.
Okay.
What about in one of the dugouts? What about one of the dugouts at Crump Parish?
What about around the backside of the picnic, probably?
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that, we could do that.
That's a second option.
Yeah.
But it may be irrelevant, like I said.
We'll get, Ms. Pope, we'll get, because we need a letter, needs to be pretty probably specific from Mr. Smith when he gets everything ironed out.
Can we get that, try to get it out tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
There won't be many crops coming in May.
Okay. Let's move on to new business F.
Strawberries, yeah.
New business F, this is the Tennessee ready letter and resolution. We have a motion on new business F. Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion?
I see any typos.
The staff felt like that we really did this in support of our staff and our teachers and, and it was odd, we had already had this put together and Scott Applewood asked me about it a while ago after, you know, he said, are we doing anything? And we are, and such grade and other systems around, you know, if you're gonna tie money, if you're gonna tie tenure, if you're gonna tie hiring people back, I don't see how you can do that. You just send in Hamilton, Knox, Shelby, Williamson, Metro, and then somebody, I heard Pope, I'm supposed to go together for seven or eight.
Any more discussion? Not, we'll vote. All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our annual policy review. Did anybody have any questions on the January policies? Okay, if there are no questions, we need an executive session. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Mr. Enick, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor. I will vote, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.